Welcome, everyone. Put this closer here. I am Sharon Green Middleton, Vice President of the City Council, Representative for the Sixth Council District, and Chairperson of the Economic and Community Development Committee. This afternoon, we will hear the following bills. Twenty-one dash oh one oh one R. I'm sorry. Twenty-two dash oh one oh one R. Twenty-two dash oh one nine eight. Twenty-two dash oh two one three. Twenty-two dash oh two one five. Twenty-two dash oh two one six. And twenty-two dash oh two four four. In attendance, we have members of the committee. John Bullock of the Ninth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mark Conway of the Fourth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ryan Dorsey of the Third District. Antonio Glover is, just get me a message, he is on his way. Councilwoman Odette Ramos of the Fourteenth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And Councilman Robert Stokes of the Twelfth District.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
And we also have members of the Office of the President. Lucy Font, Staff Assistant for Legislative Affairs. Erin DeGraffan Reed, General Counsel for the Council. Matt Stegman, Director of Fiscal and Legislative Analysts. And Nathan Poole, Fiscal and Legislative Analysts. And also, representing the Mayor's Office, we have Nina Themulus. And we're going to start with Bill Number Twenty-two dash oh two four four, City Street Closing. Three ten-foot alleys for the purpose of condemning and closing. One, a ten-foot alley extending from the northwest side of Virginia Avenue to the southeast side of Woodland Avenue. Two, a ten-foot alley extending from the northeast side of Homer Avenue to the southwest side of a ten-foot alley. And number three, a ten-foot alley extending from the southeast side of Virginia Avenue to the northwest side of the fifteen-foot alley. And providing for a special effective date, this resolution was introduced on June thirteenth, 2022. The bill was sponsored by the President for the Department of Transportation. And we're going to go ahead and move on to, the committee will now hear from the agencies, and we'll go ahead and start with the city solicitor.
Can you hear me?
Hello? You're online? Is that Elena DePietro?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, we stand by our report.
Thank, thank.
That's okay, we stand by our report.
Thank you, Hillary. City Solicitor's Office.
Okay.
Favorable report.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
Department of Planning. You're, you have to hold on your mic.
Can you hear me? Okay. So Tamara Woods with the Department of Planning, and we stand by our report of approval.
Thank you. Favorable report from Tamara Woods in the Planning Department. Department of Housing and Community Development. Stephanie?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And members of the committee, Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for DHCD. I just want to acknowledge that I'm joined by two members of the DHCD Development Team, Bill Bergi and Tony Badon today. This alley closing is essential for the first phase of the development plan for Park Heights, which is going to bring 100 senior housing units, 55 units of multifamily, and 17 units of for-sale housing to the Park Heights community. We stand by our report in support of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Department of Transportation.
Madam Chair, Liam Davis, Baltimore City Department of Transportation. We stand by our bill report, which is in support for this legislation. We regularly work with Baltimore City Housing and Community Development on these alley and street closure bills to consolidate parcels, make them more attractive for redevelopment efforts. So again, we stand by our report in support of this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Liam and BDC, the Baltimore Development Corporation.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Dave Garza for Baltimore Development. We stand by our report. Favorable?
Thank you, Dave. And just to add, this is another long-waiting project in Park Heights that is about to take off on that some of the acreage that has been sitting there for a long time. So the community is very much excited about all of this. So thank you all for those reports. Do we have any public, any comments from the, or questions from the committee at this point? We have no one that has signed in for this particular bill. Are there any attendees that are present that would like to testify on this bill before we move on?
So originally, the, the.
So hello, is this someone called Bree? Oh, okay, that's for another bill. There's some.
He's calling out two four zero. I found not.
Okay. Is this Mr. Jones? Are you wanting to testify on Bill Twenty-two dash oh two four four?
No.
Kristen?
Mossbrook.
Mossbrook? Are you testifying on Twenty-two dash oh two four four? Hearing no comment, moving on. We're just making sure. And the last one is Robin Heath.
She's with my.
Okay. And you're with another bill. Okay, there are no amendments to this bill. Is there a motion to move the bill?
So moved.
So moved by Ramos, second by Conway. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Conway?
Aye.
Aye. Dorsey?
Yes.
Is a yes. Glover absent. Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes. This bill will move favorable, this bill will move favorable and to second reader at the next council meeting. Next bill is Bill Number Twenty-two dash oh two one five, City Streets Closing Two Ten-Foot Alleys for the Purpose of Condemning and Closing Two Ten-Foot Alleys Bound by East Twenty-Third Street, Greymont Avenue, and East Twenty-Second Street, and Providing for a Special Effective Date. The bill was introduced on April fourth, 2022, and the bill was sponsored also by President Mosby and the administration. And any comments from the sponsor? Same type of bill. We'll just go ahead and if there's no questions from the committee, we'll go ahead and move to hear from agency representatives, and we'll start with the city solicitor's office.
Yes, Madam Chair, this is Hillary Rulie for the city solicitor's office. We stand by our report. Favorable.
Thank you. So the city solicitor has a favorable report. Department of Transportation, Liam Davis.
Madam Chair, we stand by our bill report.
And Department of Transportation has a favorable report. Department of Planning, Tamara Woods.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Department of Planning stands by its report.
And Department of Planning has a favorable report. Department of Housing and Community Development, Stephanie Murdock.
Yes, Madam Chair, Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for DHCD. We do stand by our bill report.
And Department of Housing has a favorable report. And the Baltimore Development Corporation.
Madam Chair, Baltimore Development stands by its report. Favorable.
Thank you. And another favorable report from BDC. And we'll now check for public testimony.
There's no signatures on the sheet.
There are no signatures or to, that have signed in. And we're now checking attendees.
Online.
That are online.
Angela Scott.
Angela Scott, are you here to testify on Bill Twenty-two dash oh two one five?
Yes, I am.
Go ahead. Thank you.
I think this bill, in favor of this bill, I think it's important in regards to the vacant houses and to improve the community.
Is, that's, Ms. Angela Scott, that's another bill that's coming at the end.
Oh, okay, I'm on Twenty-two dash oh one oh aura.
Okay, this one is for oh two one five, so we'll, we'll come back to you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's also for the last bill.
Okay, I think that's it. So we'll, there are no amendments to this bill, and so we'll go ahead and have a motion to move the bill from committee?
Second.
So moved by Ramos.
Wait a minute, there's a technical amendment.
Oops, back up. Yes, sorry, yes, there is a technical amendment to consider. The amendment corrects the address in the bill to read as Twenty-two.
And a half.
Second, Twenty-two and a half Street. Twenty-two Second and a Half Street, not Twenty, Twenty-Second Street. It's Twenty-Second and a Half Street. So the amendment has been shared with the committee. Is there a motion to move the amendment?
So moved.
So moved by Ramos, second by Stokes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Motion to move the bill.
So moved.
So moved by Ramos, second by Conway. Moving favorable as amended, Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Yes, Conway?
Aye.
Is a aye. Dorsey?
Yes.
Is a yes. Glover is absent. Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes. This bill will move to second reader at the next council meeting. And now we're on the next bill, Twenty-two dash oh two one three, a street encroachment for 20 East Randall Street for the Purpose of Permitting, Subject to Certain Conditions, the Construction and Maintenance of a Portion of a Building to protect, to project into the public right-of-way on the east side of Henry Street on the property known as forty, on the property known as four twenty, East Randall Street, and Providing for a Special Effective Date. The bill was introduced on April fourth, 2022. The bill is also sponsored by Council President for the Administration. And we'll now hear from agencies. Again, we'll start with the city solicitor's office. Hillary, are you there?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Jeff Hoxter with the city solicitor's office. The Law Department stands by its report and approves the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you, Jeff. That was approved favorable. Transportation, Liam?
Madam Chair, Liam Davis, Baltimore City DOT. We stand by our report in support of this legislation. I do want to mention that the online bill file does include a letter of support from the local Riverside Community Association.
Thank you, Liam. And then we have the Board of Municipal Zoning Appeals.
Madam Chair, Nina Themulus with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. The BMZA stands by its report and deferring to the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Nina. Department of Planning.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tamara Woods with the Department of Planning, and we stand by our report recommending approval. And I will just note, for this particular project, our staff worked very closely with the applicant and with the Department of Transportation to come up with a solution that we were all comfortable with, so we do stand by our report and recommend approval.
Thank you. Department of Planning, a favorable report with Tamara Woods. Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for DHCD. We stand by our bill report. We do not object to the passage of this bill.
Thank you, Stephanie. No objection from Housing. The Parking Authority of Baltimore City.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Christmas age from the Parking Authority of Baltimore City. We stand by our bill report, which is not opposed.
Thank you.
I also have a question. I believe it's on the west side of Henry Street, not on the east side.
You said it's for, you said it's on the west side of Randall Street?
Of Henry Street.
Of Henry Street. Oh, okay. So it's saying, public right-of-way on the east side of Henry Street, so.
That's, that's a technical amendment.
If that is correct, a technical amendment has to be put in. Let's go back to the city solicitor. How should we handle that?
She can offer it in vocally if she.
Okay. Would you, the person from the Parking Authority?
Christmas.
Chris, would you like to offer a technical amendment verbally?
If that's appropriate?
Yes, it is.
Yes, I'd like to offer a technical amendment, that the bill text be changed to, to project into the right-of-way on the west side of Henry Street on the property known as four twenty East Randall Street.
So I think it's been suggested that we probably do a floor amendment. So we, could we have the Law Department weigh in, please? Jeff, are you there? Or Hillary? Jeff or Hillary?
Yes, I think that technical amendment should be fine. Hillary, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that should be fine.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Councilwoman Ramos?
I don't, I don't.
Is this your area?
This isn't mine, so I was just wondering, though, if, if it's, I don't see anywhere else that it says west unless I.
This is Liam with DOT. There's actually a plat also included on the, on the online bill file, and it does sound like this, this is a drafting error, because it's extending eastwardly in the western portion of Henry Street, and that's probably where the bill drafter got messed up.
So I think we can do a floor amendment.
I concur with law.
And Jeff, could you repeat what you would like?
Yeah.
That would be in the best interest for what, for us to do to move this forward?
Yes, the technical amendment should be fine. There's no advertising or notice issue here. It's a simple drafting error on that, on that merely technical amendment.
Floor amendment.
Councilman Dorsey.
Madam Chair, I'd be happy to offer the amendment right here and now, so it doesn't have to be done on the floor on second reader. There's no reason we can't just do it orally right now.
If, do we have any objections from the committee on that? Hearing none, you're on.
Thank, correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to change the word east to west, or west.
East to west.
Okay, great. I'd like to amend that wherever this word appears, we change the word east to say west. We strike east and replace it with west.
So, yeah, try not to be so specific, and we'll.
Do you mean specific or vague? What is, I don't have the bill in front of me.
I think we should just do a floor amendment.
Okay. So now, Councilwoman Ramos, you had a, wanted to make a statement?
My suggestion was just because east shows up in lots of places in the bill, and so that if we're going to be, if we want to be specific.
What is, sorry, what is the line on which it needs to be changed?
There's like five of them.
Thank you.
And the title, and the preamble, and the.
No? Okay, they're saying no.
The only place that needs to be corrected is page one, line four.
Thank you, okay.
So.
Okay, if I may, again, then.
So you want to redo that, is page one, line four?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. On page one, line four, strike east and replace with west.
Oh, I'm sorry, so that's east of.
I move this amendment.
Okay, I got it, I got it now, yeah, that's fine. Second.
Okay.
I understand where he was talking.
So the suggestion was made by Dorsey and, for the amendment, and who's second?
Dorsey and Ray.
Okay.
Conway. Or Conway?
Yeah.
Conway, second, Dorsey, okay. And yes, we have an amendment.
Say thanks to Chris.
Thank you, Chris. Or was that Jeff?
Chris.
Okay.
We have to vote on it. Let me take a vote.
Okay, let's take a vote. Is there a motion to move the floor amendment?
Yes, I move, I move the amendment.
Okay, Dorsey, and then second by Conway. All, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing none.
I'll move it favorably as amended.
Thank you. That was moved by Conway, again, and second by Ramos. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Conway?
Aye.
Aye. Dorsey?
Yes.
Is a yes. Glover absent. Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. And Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes. Thank you. Okay, the next bill, Twenty-two dash oh two one six, City Property Grant of Easement for the Purpose of Authorizing the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore to Grant Easement to the Maryland State Highway Administration for the Installation and Maintenance of a Traffic Control Device Sidewalk and Medium in the Vicinity of the Intersection of Maryland One, Eastern Avenue, and the Entrance to East Point Mall, Baltimore County, Maryland, as shown on plat five nine seven nine five, filed in the State Highway Administration's State Roads Permission and Providing for a Special Effective Date. This bill was introduced on April fourth, 2022. The bill was also sponsored by the President on behalf of the, for the Administration. And we'll start with transportation on this.
Madam Chair, Liam Davis, Baltimore City DOT. This is a unique bill that comes up from time to time, where the State Highway Administration needs a city council ordinance to actually, you know, make changes to their state highway out of the city limits. And the reason being is it's largely often associated with our regional water utility. So in this specific case, this intersection at East Point Mall and Rolling Mill Road is located within the vicinity of Back River Waste Water Treatment Facility, and the city owns land, owns right-of-way, all the way from the city line extending out to Back River. And this intersection is located within that right-of-way. So they need our permission to kind of expand what they're doing there to improve the intersection, make pedestrian safety improvements, and so forth. So occasionally, these types of bills do come before the council, and it's pretty unique to Baltimore City. I don't think any other local governments have this level of authority where the state needs our permission to get authority, to get our authority, to, to work on their state highway. So it's an interesting circumstance, but we stand by our bill report in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that description. Any questions to transportation? Okay, hearing none. City Solicitor?
Hi, Madam Chair, this is Hillary Rulie from the city's Law Department, and we stand by our report in support of the bill and approve it for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you, Hillary. City Solicitor's Office is favorable. The Parking Authority?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Akosan from the Parking Authority, and we do not oppose the passage of the bill.
Thank you. Parking Authority is not opposed. Department of Finance?
Good afternoon, Maru James with the Department of Finance. We stand by our report. We do not oppose this legislation.
Thank you. Finance does not oppose. Department of Wrexon Parks?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. I'm Jenny Morgan from Baltimore City Wrexon Parks, and as this lies in Baltimore County and does not affect our agency, we defer to our friends at DOT and do not oppose.
Thank you, Jenny. Department of Housing and Community Development?
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for DHCD. We stand by our bill report. We do not object to the passage of this bill.
Thank you. No opposition there. Department of Planning?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tamara Woods with the Department of Planning, and we stand by our report of no objection and defer to the Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Tamara. No objection there. This bill will proceed to the Board of Estimates if approved by the committee. we have no amendments to this bill. And we are checking, there, there is no one that has signed up to testify. And now we'll check to see if there's any call-ins or online. Okay, most of the people listed are for the last bill, but we're going to check one name. Nicole Hart?
She's with DHCD.
Oh, okay, she's with Housing. Okay, based on the findings, is there a motion to move the bill?
So moved.
So moved by Ramos, second by Conway. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Conway?
Aye.
Aye. Dorsey?
Yes.
Is a yes. Glover absent. Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes. And this bill will move to second reader at the next council meeting. Bill Number Twenty-two dash oh one nine eight, City Property Naming the Baltimore City Health Department Building to the Dr. Maxine T. Collier Health Department Building for the Purpose of Naming the Baltimore City Health Department Building Located at one zero zero one East Fayette Street to the Dr. Maxine T. Collier Health Department Building. This bill was introduced on February twenty-second, 2022, and the bill was sponsored by Committee Member Councilman Stokes. Would you like to comment moving forward? Okay, this is another basic thing here. So we're going to now hear from agencies, the city solicitor on this bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Hillary Rulie from the Law Department. We approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Okay, thank you. And that bill is favorable by the city solicitor. The health, a representative from the Health Department here?
Hello, yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I'm Kelly Eastman with the Baltimore City Health Department.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your name?
Yes, Kelly Eastman.
You can, those that are speaking, you can take, keep your mask off while you're talking.
Thank you. We stand by our report, which is favorable, favorable.
Thank you. Favorable from the Health Department. Planning Commission?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tamara Woods with the Department of Planning, and I'll note that the Planning Commission did hear this bill on April twenty-eighth, 2022, and they recommended approval.
Thank you. Favorable from the Planning Commission. Department of Transportation?
Madam Chair, Liam Davis, Baltimore City DOT. We stand by our bill report in support of the legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Department of Real Estate?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Casey Kelleher from the Department of Real Estate. We stand by our report as favorable. Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Casey Keller here from the Department of Real Estate. We stand by our report as favorable.
Thank you. A favorable report from Real Estate and the Baltimore Development Corporation?
Madam Chair, we stand by our report. Favorable.
Thank you. And BDC is also favorable. The committee received a letter of support also from Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health. And now we'll hear from sponsor of the bill, Councilman Stokes.
I should have wanted to say something. I just want to mention that Dr. Maxine Collier was the first Baltimore hero. He's the first black commissioner of Baltimore City Health Department and the staunch advocate of mental health services for black residents of Baltimore City and the early champion of needle exchange programs to prevent the spread of HIV. Dr. Collier deserves Baltimore's deep love and respect. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And we have no one that, no one signed in. Okay, and we have no amendments. So is there a motion to move the bill?
Move.
So moved by Stokes, second by Ramos. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Conway?
Aye.
Is a aye. Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes. Glover, absent. Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Stokes?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, moving on to our last bill. It's bill number twenty-two dash oh-one-oh-one-R. Informational hearing. Mayor's recommendations, thirty-day review of strategies to eliminate vacant and abandoned properties for the purpose of inviting the city solicitor, the deputy mayor for community and economic development, the city solicitor, the commissioner of the Department of Housing and Community Development, the director of finance, the director of the Department of Public Works to appear before the Baltimore City Council to present the findings and recommendations of the mayor's thirty-day review for eliminating privately and publicly owned vacancies. This bill was introduced on April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two. The bill was sponsored by Councilwoman Ramos. Councilwoman, would you like to make comments?
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you very much, and thank you to the, thank you for scheduling this resolution, and thank you to the committee for your time. I, this has, as you know, been a huge issue for us in our city. Vacant and abandoned properties has been a big issue in our city for decades. And this, obviously, in the last few months, we've been paying special attention to it. On January twenty-fourth, three of our firefighters were killed in a fire in a vacant and abandoned property. It was vacant for many years with thousands of dollars' worth of liens next to another vacant properties on that block. This follows multiple decades of decay in many of our neighborhoods where residents who still live there have had to deal with the impact of vacant properties next to them for years. As we know, vacant and abandoned properties in our neighborhoods have an impact on public health and public safety. We know that when students walk to school next to vacant properties, the cortisol in their brain increases. This increases the stress and blocks learning. We know that residents living next to vacant properties have water in their basements, rodents, mold, other structural problems, and very often cannot get homeowners insurance. We know the majority of our violent crime happens in areas with vacant and abandoned properties. We know that our lack of investment and initiative to address this problem head-on has caused trauma, sent the wrong message that we as leaders do not care about certain neighborhoods, and has caused immeasurable harm to our communities. This did not just start today. This has been a crisis for decades caused by racist housing policies that Baltimore started, and frankly, many continue today. To me, addressing vacant properties must be our top priority because it links to everything else that's happening in our city. True equitable development is about investing in our neighborhoods that have suffered the most in a way that does not displace residents. We can do this. Many of us have been working in this field for a long time, and finally, we are seeing a shift in thinking towards addressing this crisis. Addressing this crisis of vacant and abandoned properties will not be fast. It will not be easy, but it is urgent, and it will take money. In my letter, I wrote to the mayor submitted for consideration during the thirty-day examination of strategies to address vacant and abandoned properties. I was clear. We need strong vision that everyone can get behind. We have fifteen thousand vacant and abandoned properties. These are ones with, that are marked with a vacant building notice. The city only owns approximately twelve hundred of them. We can, in my mind, our vision should be removing, and our goal should be removing half of them in the next ten years. It is doable if we are changing our systems as well as adding more money and the tools that we need to do this. We can remove half of the vacant properties in ten years with concerted strategic effort. A, changing the tools and systems we use to acquire and dispose of properties. And I'm proud to say we have begun to do this by fully implementing the new judicial interim system where the city forecloses on liens when they are above the value of the property, and we have an agreement with the courts for separate docket to expedite these cases. We still have a long way to go in changing our disposition process, our permit office, and other systems, but I'm proud to say that we have begun. B, we need to raise the money. This is a three billion dollar problem. We must explore all of our options, including expanding our borrowing capacity, working with state and federal partners, and raising private capital. We need this money for demolition, deconstruction, stabilization, and subsidy. It is essential. And C, provide incentives for investment in our areas that need it most. Restructuring our tax credits and incentives to be equitable and fair is critical. After the January, the tragedy of January twenty-fourth, Mayor Scott announced an internal working group led by the city administrator to assess our current strategies for addressing vacant and abandoned properties and incorporate new tools and strategies to address this crisis. Commissioner Kennedy has also already outlined strategies incorporating the impact investment areas that were initially established by the Pew Administration. And moreover, the working group agreed that the tools we currently have are not working, or at least not as effective as they should be. While receivership may work in some areas, it has also led to massive speculation, and neighborhoods cannot compete and outbid speculators to control the outcome of the property. This hearing is about understanding every single strategy that is outlined in the resulting memorandum from this thirty-day process. We will go through almost every line, if not every line, and determine what the status of every strategy and what the next steps should be. We will hear testimony about the work being done in neighborhoods already and the work the city should be, the city should be doing to make properties avail, excuse me. We will hear testimony about the work being done in neighborhoods already and that the work of the city should be making properties available, providing funding to leverage more dollars to do the work and to advance equitable development. These are three goals we should be striving for as we work to resolve this crisis. I should add, making sure that we have affordable housing as well. I'm thrilled that many of the recommendations outlined in my letter coming from decades of work in the field were incorporated into this thirty-day memo, and I thank the administration for allowing me to play a role in the implementation of the judicial interim system and the critical negotiations regarding the court process. I continue to move through the list of recommendations that I had in my letter and have so far introduced five pieces of legislation with more coming. Colleagues, I don't intend to vote this resolution out today. We will have periodic status hearings about where we are on these strategies to move the needle and push hard for further action. Today in the audience and online, we have residents who care deeply about our city and who have suffered with living in areas with blight. We also have the families of two of the fallen firefighters who will testify today. I am grateful for the time each of them has taken to be here and grateful for this committee's commitment to action. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Now we'll move on. Thank you. Now we will hear from agency representatives, and I'm going to start with the city administrator, Christopher Shorter.
All right. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Middleton and honorable members of the Economic and Community Development Committee. I am honored to provide remarks and testimony in reference to the recommendations provided to the mayor as part of the thirty-day review of citywide strategies and actions focused on eliminating vacant and abandoned properties. My name is Chris Shorter, and I have the privilege of serving as the city administrator here in the city of Baltimore. I would like to start by thanking the mayor for his leadership and the clear and decisive action as he asked and made a clear directive to governmental agencies to convene and review all the work being done citywide and ultimately provide recommendations on strategies to improve how city government manages private and vacant publicly owned properties. Public, I should say, private and publicly owned vacant properties. As you know, the mayor's directive was in response to the collapse of a privately owned vacant building on the two-hundredth block of South Stricker Street, a fire that, as noted, took the life of three firefighters and left one seriously injured. I am joined today by, and very thankful for, representatives and senior officials from our Department of Housing and Community Development, the Law Department, the Department of Public Works, the Finance Department, and others. And I would like to specifically acknowledge our deputy mayor for Community and Economic Development, Ted Carter, our housing commissioner who is here, Alice Kennedy, our director of public works, Jason Mitchell, our director of finance, Henry Raymond, and our deputy solicitor, Ebony Thomas. Each have played and continue to play a key role in the mayor's executive work group focused on vacant and abandoned property. As you know, the Scott administration has organized the strategy direction for our city government and the policies we wish to achieve around five key strategic pillars. The mayor's action plan has been organized around these pillars. That is prioritizing youth, building public safety, clean and healthy communities, equitable neighborhood development, and responsible stewardship of city resources. Each pillar features several sub-goals, and each goal is composed of multiple actions. The priorities of these pillars have helped us to prioritize the allocation of scarce resources to ensure that the administration's priorities are properly resourced and to align with the administration's policy goals. As highlighted in the vacant housing memorandum, the Scott administration has made a clear commitment to addressing the complex issue of vacant properties. Several goals outlined in the mayor's strategic plan explicitly address the persistent issue of vacant properties. That is the goal of increasing capital investment and ensuring equitable access to services in formerly redlined neighborhoods as well as increasing population with a focus on supporting seniors and maintaining legacy Baltimore residents while attracting more black, middle-income, and immigrant families. As of yesterday, there are fourteen thousand seven hundred and eighty vacant buildings in the city of Baltimore. This represents a reduction of two hundred and ten vacant homes since the memo originally published on March fourth of this year. Of the current vacant buildings, eleven hundred and fifty-five are city-owned. One hundred and eighty-seven are owned by other governmental entities, and the remaining thirteen thousand four hundred and twenty are privately held. After the memorandum was published in early March, the mayor's executive vacants work group, the cross-agency team who developed the recommendation for the mayor's consideration transitioned its focus to cross-agency team responsible for the implementation of the actions associated with that memorandum. The work group is being facilitated by DHCD's acting chief of policy and partnership, Kimberly Rubens, and began meeting bi-weekly using a software system called Planner. This is a tool in Microsoft to track the implementation of recommendations made to Mayor Scott. As some of you may know, the tool is a highly, I should say, high-level project management tool. Its online capabilities allow work group members from multiple agencies both to have access and to track progress towards implementing the recommendations. The benefits of this tool are threefold. First, it is a central repository of all progress made to address vacancies, which can be accessed at any time by anyone on the work group. Two, because it is an enterprise technology solution, all agencies have access to the tool, thus eliminating the need for special access to an agency's systems. And three, since the tool allows for updates to be made ahead of work group meetings, the inter-agency team can focus on the nuanced coordination that needs to take place to tackle the complex issue of vacant properties. Through Planner, each recommendation has been turned into its own virtual task card. Each card, the recommendation is assigned to an action owner, given a due date. It outlines the scope of work necessary to execute that task and spaced through the notes section to update the executive work group on the progress. We have categorized all the various actions outlined in the memorandum into actions we believe can be accomplished in three-month, six-month, nine-month, one-year, and two-year segments. We have also pulled out actions that require separate financial allocations and are working diligently with our budget and finance teams to properly prioritize funding needs year over year. We certainly understand the need to increase demolition investment and have identified a goal of ten million annually in the memorandum. We have identified funding for housing upgrades to benefit seniors, including seven million in capital investments announced as part of the Housing ARPA package. In terms of filling motions to vacate judgments of lien holders that fail to acquire deeds, since we began our cross-agency work, the Law Department has filed motions to vacate judgments after ninety days, and the Law Department has identified over four hundred properties where we will begin filing these motions to pressure judgment owners to either pay the post-judgment taxes and take possession of the property or lose their rights. We are working with the Finance and the Law, Finance Department and the Law Department to identify funding for at least one paralegal and an attorney to support this continued work. I look forward to my colleague, agency directors here today to provide more details and a more comprehensive update on some of the major accomplishments that have been achieved since March fourth, twenty-twenty-two, when the memorandum was originally published and sent to the mayor. I would like to again express my appreciation, first to Mayor Scott for his confidence and my ability to support the Baltimore City Government in this way and as we move to this next phase of success around eliminating abandoned and vacant property. Thank you, Chairwoman, for the opportunity, and I am available to answer questions as we finish.
Thank you, Administrator Shorter. And before we move on to Commissioner Kennedy, it's a statement that I think I want to make as we proceed on with testimony and also after listening to your comments as administrator. And I do want to say that the recommendations outlined in Councilmember Ramos's letter, your comments, we're going to be listening to public testimony. All of this is notable and impressive and basically needed. But I do want to say it's not the intent of this committee, however, or should it be the intent of the legislative branch of government to micromanage executive-level agencies? Review and monitoring for legislative enhancements are important, particularly when so many tools and resources are being used. I understand change and flexibility. I also know that the city's vacant housing problem needs to be resolved. In the future, I look forward to proceeding with a review of certain agency actions during various stages of the implementation process. But again, I stress that this is not the intent of this committee to. But again, I stress that this is not the intent of this committee to micromanage the implementation process. Going forward, the committee may convene legislative oversight hearings to review implementation of certain strategies. And I feel that this had to be said publicly, just so we're all on the same page and know that all of this is, that all the different pieces that we all put together and the roles that we play, at the end of the day, it's all about helping our constituency in Baltimore City and just making sure that our committee members all know that as well. Thank you. And so now we'll move on to Commissioner Kennedy.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman, Vice President Middleton, and members of the committee. Thank you for convening this afternoon. You know, on January 31st, Mayor Scott directed the agencies that service and look at vacant properties to look at how we can better address vacant properties within the city of Baltimore. DHCD took that time, working also in collaboration with other agencies, to put forth a memo to CAO Shorter and Mayor Scott outlining areas that the agency felt were key components, that were either barriers to our work that we do or that we have thought about in years doing this work, or new ideas that we knew that we needed to bring to the table to help address vacant properties in the city of Baltimore. As CAO Shorter noted, as of yesterday, we are down to 14,780 properties. That is the least, we are below 15,000 vacant properties for the longest time that the city has been below 15,000 properties. We actually haven't been below 15,000 properties in decades. And so we are now at the longest period of time below 15,000 properties. We know that there is more work to do. We know at the agency that this is an urgent matter, that this is something that negatively impacts our residents, our families, our communities, and has significantly impacted families of our fellow Baltimore City Fire Department families as well. We are committed to working with CAO Shorter in the framework that he's put together with the Vacants Work Group. We staff that work group, as CAO Shorter stated with Kimberly Rubens as the lead staff person for that. Specifically within the work group and the vacancy memo, DHCD is overall, you know, has over 43 of the recommendations that are kind of specific to DHCD. That doesn't mean that we aren't actually working with the other agencies in collaboration on a number of the other recommendations within the mayor's 30-day memo. We have made significant progress in the three months that we've been convening. A couple of items that I wanted to highlight for the committee today on progress, we've launched the Roof Study Partnership with Carnegie Mellon University's Data Science for Social Good Group, and we're going to be utilizing the aerial images and looking for rooftops that are in distress and helping us prioritize where we're looking at for stabilization as well as demolitions. We have been collaborating with the Baltimore City Fire Department on updating information that's built into the Fire Department's CAD system and making sure that we have as up-to-date and clear information for the Fire Department for them to be able to do their jobs efficiently, effectively, and safely. Working with the CAO and the mayor's office and Director Raymond, we have currently in the budget just over $7 million for demolition and stabilization work as well as staffing for demolition. We've completed in the last three months 48 emergency demolitions. We've also completed 60 planned demolitions as well as 88 emergency stabilizations. Last three months, we've also issued over 2,000 failure-to-abate citations through staff incorporating the failure-to-abate citations on their regular route. We've also, you know, worked with Mayor Scott and the administration on removing the owner-occupied when we think about the prevention of vacants, removing owner-occupied properties from the 2022 tax list, which was something that is also critical when we think about prevention of vacants. We've worked, as CAO Shorter said, through the ARPA investment, increased funding of $7 million for the housing upgrades to benefit seniors to help with prevention of vacants. We also have $3 million that we designated for our Emergency Mortgage and Housing Assistance Program to help ensure that residents can stay in their homes and that those homes also do not become vacant. We've launched the Buy Into Baltimore website, which is a single point of access to find properties in Baltimore City. We've launched the Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design pilot with MONC, that's looking at vacant and blighted properties in pilot areas with high crime. And we've also received already 109 applications through our open bid process through Buy Into Baltimore for city properties. And in this last three months, we've completed 73 acquisitions in preparing those for site redevelopment. One key component, and this is a highlight in partnership with the Law Department, is negotiating and working on that streamlined in-rem tax lien foreclosure process with the Circuit Court, which will greatly improve our ability to acquire properties strategically in areas across the city. So this takes, the in-rem process takes a tax lien foreclosure process, which we have, which still remains, and takes that from about a two- to three-year timeframe, and we're looking now at a nine-month timeframe for properties that we're able to use in-rem, which is a huge, huge step that has been made in the last three months when we talk about progress on the Vacants Program. I also want to say that there has been a significant amount of work across our city over the years as addressing properties, and we've had some key development advancements that are taking what used to be areas of vacant and abandoned and blighted properties and putting those forth for new development. So Woodland Gardens, we had a groundbreaking for Woodland Gardens, which was once, you know, 48 city-owned vacant properties that now will be renovated, and that was consolidated. You know, we're kicking off soon the rehabilitation in partnership with Johnson Square and Rebuild Metro next week, and you know, their next 36 properties that will be rehabilitated for homeownership and rental. We've also, you know, had the success of a ribbon-cutting on Renaissance Row, which also is a new construction of units where there once were previously city-owned vacant and blighted properties. So continuing this work, as CAO Shorter said, we're continuing this work with a laser focus and a determination as we look at every area where we can make progress using innovation and techniques and working with our colleagues in city government to advance the recommendations that were put forth in Mayor Scott's 30-day vacancy memo, and so that we can eliminate and prevent blight across the city. And otherwise, we stand by our bill report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bullock has a question for you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Commissioner, for getting into some of the details. Just a couple of follow-ups, particularly as it relates to hubs. We know, again, that's a great program if you want to prevent additional blight and prevent these houses from being vacant. I'm not going to ask you about this one particular case that we've been dealing with, but from a larger perspective, can you talk a little bit about how this process works for the housing upgrades to benefit seniors, particularly the intake process and then the length of time for repairs? In one case, in one case we're talking about, we know a gentleman's waiting for his roof to be repaired, and I know there's some delays in that, and obviously subsequent damage is happening. Can you talk about that and if that process could be streamlined, and if so, what effect that may have in terms of getting some of these repairs done?
So we do have a single point of intake for hubs within partnership with Civic Works and our nonprofit hub partners, and we actually work very closely and have kind of the same list that translates to the work that we cover in the city of Baltimore through the program. So it's, you know, a partnership, private-public partnership in terms of advancing those applications as quickly as possible, but we have a single point of intake, gets assigned with the social worker for evaluation to help evaluate not just the repairs that are needed, but also other wraparound services to help stabilize that owner within their property. So we also sometimes, depending upon what funding sources at the time are available, that can delay in terms of when services can be provided, but we're constantly looking for and adding additional funding sources to the mix.
And just a follow-up. Thank you for mentioning Civic Works. Again, I think just for folks edification so they understand how that works. And as I'm sort of alluding to, some of these issues are very urgent, and so it can be difficult at times when there's a homeowner who's dealing with this issue and, you know, they're complaining, but we can't really get those things addressed in a more timely fashion.
And I would say just also do not hesitate for anything. Like if it hasn't been highlighted or elevated through the normal hubs process, the social worker is very good at knowing in terms of level of status, because we do take on emergency situations where those get elevated, because there is an emergency situation with either, you know, we've had things where there's gas leaks in the home or imminent risk of a roof collapse or significant amount of damage. So we do elevate emergency situations as well, because we know the importance that it takes in terms of being able to assist residents across the city and the importance of it for preventing further damage, not just to the home, but further emotional and mental trauma and mental health well-being for the occupant of the home as well.
And thank you for that. And just one comment, as we know, a lot of these properties that may be either vacant or have structural damage can affect the properties next to it. So again, I think about that urgency. So thank you for addressing that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bullock. And I was sitting here, Commissioner, thinking of that infamous 4,200 block of Park Heights Avenue that is consistently, when the news media wants to portray vacant homes, that's one block that's always in the news. I don't know if you have any updates on that, but it's clearly example of just about every single problem that could happen within one block. And in the middle of that block is, was a senior that, early on, refused to leave, and then now she, I don't know if she's been helped, but it's just, if you want to comment on that.
Yeah, I can. And that is, as you and I know, that is an infamous block that is something that we've been trying to address for a while. And we did identify the funding source to be able to utilize to assist for the relocation of the resident and homeowner that is now looking at, you know, wanting to take that next step. So one of the things that is a situation, and it's not just on that block, that is a block that we know is highlighted often, but when you think about many blocks across the city of Baltimore, some of our, you know, key areas that we have is that we often have vacant properties and we still have occupied properties, whether or not it be rental occupied or homeowner-occupied, that hinder in terms of our ability to strategically think about, you know, demolition, if that would be something to do, and how to best assist those remaining residents with either looking at relocation or looking at what the development plan would be for the entire block, taking into consideration acquisition and so forth. But we know that with that 4,200 block of Park Heights, we will be assisting in relocation of the resident, and then looking at that, we've identified for the demolition is there as well.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos, you had some questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioner. Just one question for the city administrator real quick. You mentioned the planning software that you're using. Are you able to, because the memo is very long, and it has lots of strategies in it that I don't know that we'll get through all of them today, but it would be great to get some reports, you know, maybe quarterly or every six months, because I know things don't happen quickly, although we'd like them to, because I think there's some very specific things in here, like coordination among the agencies for boarding and, you know, the 400 cases that we're about to put through the process that we just talked about, and, you know, those kinds of things. And I mean, I think we're going to have more than one hearing about this, but, you know, it would be great to do that. So I'm glad that there's a platform that everybody's using. I just don't know whether it spits out reports that we can then compare with this particular memo.
Happy to provide the committee with updates. We can figure out what frequency makes most sense. I know DHCD is working right now to develop a framework for report-outs, and so we'll be happy with the committee.
Yeah, that would be great. I know that the mayor's office has done trackers for a lot of initiatives, and this is a huge one that I think we should do a public tracker for. So that would be great if you can do that. The second question is, the city administrator said we have $10 million for demo, and the commissioner just said we have $7.
I believe the memo states, and what CAO stated, the memo states a goal of increasing the amount of demolition to $10 million.
Oh, okay.
So that's a goal within the memo, and for this fiscal year, fiscal year '23, we're at 7.1.
Okay, thank you. That we had taken care of. And then the last piece, are we going to talk about money at some point? Because I think we've got the, we know that the systems are starting to move, which I think is good. We've got more work to do there, but we got to raise this money. And, you know, we've talked about increasing the bonding capacity. We actually have a hearing from one of my colleagues that she introduced about it. We haven't heard it yet. We need to figure out how to access capital. So there's a lot of money that's actually spelled out in this memo. If we do the math, it's about $3 billion total. And so what is the, what's the plan? We don't have to have $3 million today, but in the next few years, we've got to raise that money. And it could be private, it could be leveraged from public money, the money. We need the microphone on.
Department of Finance, and I guess you can go ahead and give your report as well.
He needs the microphone. He needs the microphone on.
Oh, I'm sorry. It should be you.
Yep.
Yep, there you go.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Middleton, honorable members of the committee, I'm Henry Raymond, Director of Finance. First, I'll address our report. As the city administrator and the HCD commissioner have indicated, we undertook this initiative in March, which was during the final phases of the fiscal '23 budget implementation process. We were able to incorporate certain of the recommendations in the '23 budget plan. You heard Director Kennedy reference the in-rem process. That was 1.7 million. That was new funding that we were able to identify to support the initiative. That 1.7 million includes additional legal positions, paralegal positions, and support staff for this initiative. We also provided additional funding to improve the lien abatement process that flows through the Department of Finance to reduce the cycle time of liens. And also, as was referenced, as it relates to the American Rescue Plan Fund, $100 million was made available to address strategic capital improvements in the amount of $56.3 million, $39.7 million for blight elimination and prevention, and $4 million for additional resident protections. So with the mayor's leadership, city administrator's support, the Finance Department has been trying to identify funding revenue streams to support this new initiative. Now, the bigger picture is going to require a lot more funding. We are not going to identify all of this funding overnight. It's going to take a period of time. Presently, we are looking at revamping, updating our annual 10-year financial plan. So for example, what is the impact of increasing our bond capacity? What does legislation look like that might bring in additional revenue streams? But the point is, this is going to be a multi-year process, and it's not going to happen overnight. I just want to stress that as strongly as I can, because if anybody thinks that we're going to make $1 billion available next year, that's a pipe drain.
Understood.
But we are going to do what we can. Now, specifically, as it relates to increasing the bond capacity, we have a RFP out on the street to get a financial consultant in to determine what should be determine what should be done with the bond capacity. Should it remain the same? Right now, it's $80 million of general obligation bonds per year. Should it increase? Can the city afford to increase it based on our revenue streams? If so, how much increase can the city support?
For, for purpose of the bond rating, could you just kind of give a definition and explain for the general public exactly what that is?
Yes, ma'am.
Good question.
So there are three bond rating agencies that determine the credit worthiness of municipal governments and state governments. So the three are Fitch, Standard &amp; Poor's, and Moody's. Municipalities have to use two or all three. The city of Baltimore uses two, Standard &amp; Poor and Moody's. The city of Baltimore has a double A grade rating. Three is the strongest. When I say three, triple A is the strongest. Double A is considered to be very stable and reflects that the municipality has very strong financial management and has very good senior leadership, i.e. the mayor and the city apparatus, including city council. So the city of Baltimore enjoys a strong double A rating. We want to maintain that rating. If we borrow too much, that could negatively impact our bond rating. Now, again, the bond rating essentially determines the credit worthiness of the local government. If the bond rating agencies determine that we're not very credit worthy, they will reduce the bond rating and that will increase the cost of borrowing money, just like in your personal life. If you don't pay your bills, you get a low credit rating. You get a low credit rating, when you want to borrow money, credit card, et cetera, go to the bank, it's going to cost you more. It works the same way with municipal governments. So as we attempt to identify new revenue streams, as we explore debt capacity, always in the background, we're going to be considering what is the impact on our credit rating? Because the only direction we want our credit rating to go is from double A to triple A, not from double A to single A or B or C. I hope that addressed the question.
Thank you, yes. Any more questions for Mr. Raymond while he's from the committee? Councilman Conway?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director Raymond, when do we expect to complete the 10-year financial plan? When do we expect to complete the 10-year plan?
The 10-year plan?
Yeah, the new financial.
Oh, it'll be later this fall. And it'll, it'll be done in time that it'll inform the fiscal '24 budget process.
Got it. Thank you. And Madam Chair, is it okay if I ask additional questions? I guess this question would go to Commissioner Kennedy and maybe Administrator Shorter. We noted that we had some success for the first time in a long time. We've dipped under 15,000 vacant homes, which is great. We also know that that is a tenuous moment. Do we have a sense of what we can attribute that success to, to date? I know we had a really hot housing market for the last two years. We know that's expected to cool down. I would suspect that that may have slowed down new vacancies for us as homes are selling like crazy. But do we have a sense for what, what's helped us thus far to get, to move down for the first time in a long time?
So I think there are a couple of different factors. And so I want to take a moment to remind everybody what it, you know, there are two ways that a vacant building no longer is a vacant building. So you can either obtain a use and occupancy permit for that building, which evates, abates the vacant building notice, or that property can be demolished. So one thing, as I noted in kind of the update, is that, you know, even in the last three months, we've had 48 properties that were emergency demolitions. So that is something that we've seen as an increase. We also know that new vacant building notices come on on a regular basis as well through regular routine code enforcement inspections throughout our community. So the number fluctuates on a fairly regular basis, you know, between kind of on a daily and weekly basis between, you know, sometimes we've gone up in the course of a week and other, other weeks we've gone down. So we have definitely seen use and occupancy permits. Also, over the last year, we've done increased enforcement for a number of our programs in terms of holding developers accountable for the timelines that they've agreed to in their land disposition agreements for city-owned properties. We've been working with the receivership process in one house at a time, looking at some of their, you know, timeframes that they've been providing with developers. So I think, you know, it has been, the market that we've been in has definitely helped. And on a regular basis, we, you know, see those two pieces. So we have some of the planned demolition, a lot of emergency demolition occurring actually in the last kind of six months to a year. And then also, we have to take into consideration that we also have, you know, new VBNs that come on on a regular basis through code enforcement activities.
Have, have we done an analysis or a white paper of sorts to try to break down for new vacancies as they come in, how they, how they get there? Is it, you know, code enforcement or complaints or, to understand what are causing new vacancies? And I ask that particularly because I know one of the issues, and I've seen this recently in my district, is a senior citizen would die and doesn't have a will, and then this home falls into disrepair because no one lives in it. Maybe there are children, but they don't know that they own it or they don't have the deed, they don't take care of it, they live in Pennsylvania, and very quickly it falls into disrepair. Then we get a VBN on it and then it goes through the vacancy process. And this could take years, sometimes decades before we can control the property.
So that is why one of the programs that we also talked about within the memo and something that has been a key piece of the work that I've done when I was deputy commissioner and now as commissioner, is highlighting our partnership in the program with Maryland Volunteer Legal Services with the My Deed, My Legacy Program, which speaks specifically to the issue that we stated. There are a couple of key areas when we talk about prevention of vacancies, right? So we do have absolutely need to increase the number of residents within the city of Baltimore that undergo their estate planning work and think about their property and, and realizing that they have an asset. I've heard from several community members just in terms of their gratefulness of being connected with a program like that. I've heard comments where they hadn't thought about the need to do that because they just were like, well, you know, my property might not have value, you know, like a lot of value or they might not actually fully realize what the value of their property would be in some of the neighborhoods. So any outreach, any connection, and I ask all of the city council members with your constituents, and we can plan and we can do outreach, we can do the, you know, connect on doing the workshops that are done. But that is an extremely important piece to this. Another piece on the prevention side, which we see that impacts vacancy, is the lack of homeowner's insurance that our residents have. So we need to increase the number of residents in our communities that have homeowner's insurance. So when you have, you know, and some people are like, well, don't they have to have homeowner's insurance? If you have a mortgage on your property, yes, you need to have homeowner's insurance. If you've lived in your property for 50 years and you no longer have a mortgage on your property and you might be a lower income resident that is juggling lots of different bills or have multiple generations of family living with you, and you're trying to pay your BGE bill and your prescription bill and your medical bills and provide food and electricity and all of the other things, sometimes home insurance is one of those things that lapses. Either it, it's a, it might fall off the radar screen, you know, unintentionally, and then sometimes it's actually a tough, one of those tough decisions that families make. But increasing and trying to work with our families to ensure that they have homeowner's insurance is also a key piece when we talk about prevention and when we talk about one of the things that can cause vacancies or bring vacancies, you know, online.
Councilman, are you?
Yes, I think that answers my questions. I'd love to, of course, circle back offline. I have a lot more questions. And do we have a report on any of this?
So we have worked with, and we can get more information for you, especially on the, on kind of the estate planning and My Deed, My Legacy. We have a lot of research that we've done and estimates that we've done based on the number of properties in the city of Baltimore. You know, we know, we estimate and know that we have around just over 25,000 properties in the city of Baltimore where the resident has lived in that property for 25 years or more, 30 years or more. 25,000, which is a large number. And so you can make certain assumptions based off of the years where, you know, since there's been a deed transfer. So it could be that that resident is still there. It could be that there wasn't an estate, but that is an occupied property where a family member is living there. You know, so there's a lot of numbers that we've had and analysis that we've looked at.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Stokes?
Thank you. I just have a comment. And I want to, my councilwoman Ramos, her bill was a great bill. But I looked through the bill and I actually introduced a bill back in March of 2022 about a blight elimination task force. And I think we need to look at that. And what it actually does is it has 27 members. Let me just tell you what they have real quick. It has the Office of Real Estate Development, Department of Housing and Community Development, Housing Code Enforcement, Land Use and Urban Design, Solid Waste Bureau of Environmental Inspection, Mayor's Office of Performance and Innovation, Operations Bureau of Baltimore City Police Department, Operations Bureau of the Baltimore City Fire Department, and Board of Lick Commissioners. And the other piece would be the city administrator and the designated director of Department of Planning, designated, and the commissioner of Housing. But the most important part I think is missing in this, there is no input from the community. We always come up with legislation here, but the community never have input. They're the ones that live next door to these vacant houses. We can raise fines all we want. With Ms. Mary and Mr. Joe, they still live next door to these vacant houses. That's what happened with those three firefighters happening here in the city. So what my bill does is it has 17 members, the three I just mentioned, and each council person get to appoint somebody from the community, not appoint, but recommend to the mayor, that one person from each council district. And those 17 people will create this task force. And the conversation is really going to come from where it's supposed to come from, the people in the community. We always have opportunity, we miss it sometimes. Again, those vacant houses, we can raise the fine, somebody living in Florida, you can raise it at $2,000. They will pay the fine, they will pay the taxes. But Ms. James and Mr. Joe got to live next door to a toxic house. We got squatters, it's had health problems. This task force right here is what we need. And I look forward to working with the administration and work with my colleague to create this task force because the piece that's missing is the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from administration on that? Any more questions before we move on? Councilwoman Ramos?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And thanks for the great questions from my colleagues. I was wondering about, I don't see a bill report from DHCD. I might have missed it. So I don't know in your bill report if you have a, because it's not online, it's not on the web exit. Anyway, I may have missed it. So do we have a map of the impact investment areas and the zone ones that you're working with so that we, so folks can see? And, and the follow-up to that is, the memo says that you want to start a lot of this work in those areas, but we know and communities have been working on this topic for a long time in various, in various ways. So they are submitting properties for the NREM process and all of that. So can you tell us a little bit about how you're sort of prioritizing? Are we, are we just doing NREM first in the impact investment areas? Or, yeah, I didn't think so. So if you can.
So we did not include a map in our bill report, but we can provide a map of the impact investment areas and kind of the zone one areas. You know, the work in the impact investment areas, I want to say it goes directly to, you know, Councilwoman Stokes' comments on, on his proposed legislation where it is conversations with community on what is happening in terms of what is, what is the plan for the properties in the community? What is the plan for the vacant properties? What is the plan for the city-owned properties? How are we going to tackle the privately owned? How are we doing tackling green space? And, you know, creating all of those components of vibrant, you know, community development with community at the table being a part of those discussions. And within that, with the impact investment areas, one of the things that we've been doing is evaluating not just the impact investment areas across not just the zone ones, but looking at zone two, zone three, zone four, everything that we can look at for NREM, tax lien foreclosure, because now we have this tool and we need to build the pipeline and get those properties into that. Outside of the impact investment areas, we don't just work in the impact investment areas. It's a highlighted, it's a targeted, it's approach. It's an approach that's been applauded nationally in terms of having a focus in areas and concentrating some, you know, invested in historically disinvested communities to make transformational change. That does not mean that the rest of the city and the rest of the work that DHCD has ignored. So we've been working with a number of communities across the city on evaluation where there is work. So whether or not it's Westport, Cherry Hill, Berea, the 4x4, South Clifton Park, other areas of, of the city on the, on the west side as well, where we, the area around North Avenue and Coppin Heights, where we can take properties that either were identified for potential receivership, and if they qualify for NREM, we're moving them over to NREM. If they were going to be on a tax lien foreclosure list, but now they qualify for NREM, because that's the key piece, is that, you know, with NREM, you do not have to have a tax lien certificate, but you also have to have the liens that are greater than the value, the assessed value of the property. Another area that we're looking at with NREM is not just on the vacant properties, but also on the vacant lots. Because vacant lots in our, in our neighborhoods are, you know, also problems in their own right for other issues, whether or not it be, you know, high grass and breeds, attraction for illegal dumping, all of those other components. And when you look at it, it's often checkerboard because we can demolish a property, but we don't have to own a property when we demolish it. So we have a lot of vacant lots where you think the city owns a wide swath of property, but it's a checkerboard pattern when you actually look at it. So NREM is going to help us with that as well. So we're kind of evaluating everything as we kind of focus on moving properties into the NREM pipeline.
So just for clarity on the reports, we, we do hear your verbal report. We don't, the committee does not have a copy of a written report?
Madam Chair, Nina Thomas with Government Relations. They were sent to the committee earlier today around noon. So I apologize for their late delivery, but we will bump them back up in everybody's inboxes so that you have them at the top.
Okay, so committee, we have the, we got the reports at noon. So if you haven't read those yet, we will have an opportunity to go over those. But thank you for the oral report. But I just wanted to get that clarification for the committee.
Yeah, understood.
Yeah, and also what I'm, I'm hoping that we can get, and maybe this goes back to what the city administrator was saying, you know, for the public's notice as well, you know, you've got short, medium, and long term here. Those of us who've been in community development understand what this is, but I think for the public, we, you know, so I'm, I was hoping, and maybe at our next hearing, we can actually go literally like, you know, A, B, C, and where we are. Because I think that explaining all of these strategies for us is super important. So we're sort of going around the edges here because this is so thick, but at some point, I think we need to go line by line. You know, you're talking about educating folks on, one of the first short-term pieces is, you know, the homeowner's insurance, tax sale prevention. You know, we have a whole work group on tax sale prevention that's going on right now. You know, we haven't talked about the ground rent redemption program, which is in here. You know, we haven't talked about the ground rent redemption program, which is in here. We've talked a bit about the court process.
So we'll have a discussion at a later time on how to present that and how housing can work to get that at the next hearing.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate it.
Any more questions from the committee? If not, we'll move on to the...
Dorsey.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Dorsey.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to note, among these strategies, the one that I'm always here to note, which is zoning reform. I was just making a note of the half dozen properties in my district that I am regularly following up on because they've been vacant for as long as I've been in office. And every effort that we've made so far has failed to basically turn any of them around. What's interesting is, you know, first of all, it's important to note that when we talk about vacancies in this city, we are so frequently talking specifically about vacant row homes, vacant attached dwellings, and particularly in, with the case of the possibility for fire and the spread of fire to multiple properties, this is an elevated concern. And how vacancy leads to fire. There's also the impact of fire leading to vacancy. And interestingly, there's a kind of a case study in the 28-2900 block of Echo Dale Avenue. Both houses, a house on each side of the street, essentially directly across from one another, 2901 and 2812, have both had fires in them. 2812 went through the receivership process three times because this is supposed to be a market, you know, viable area where receivership is actually supposed to work and turn a property around. That property today sits with three-foot tall grass on it because the city is the only person, the only entity that is kind of stuck holding the bill to maintain this property because eventually, after selling it three times through receivership, the city just had to resort to tearing it down because none of the three purchasers through the receivership process could make the finances work to turn this house back into a habitable, single-dwelling unit, which is, in fact, the same problem that we have in many of the row homes in the city in much more depressed market areas. That is to say that also, across the street, we have a house that historically has been four dwellings, same block, same kind of neighborhood character to it, but this house has been four dwellings for a number of years. And this house had a fire in it. And it is currently being renovated. It is not sitting fallow for years before we push it through the receivership process once, twice, three times, and then tear it down and just leave an empty space in a community that is of high opportunity where we want more people to have the opportunity to move to in this city. We are not only facing a vacancy problem, we are facing a housing shortage, a shortage problem. Live Baltimore says that we are 5,000 housing units short of what our current demand needs, and we expect that number only to go up, that our, our demand will continue to be less and less met. Nationally, housing underproduction has been way below what it needs to be, not only nationally as a whole, but within metropolitan regions like the Baltimore area has been well below what it should be for many, many years. And the rate of underproduction has doubled. We are building half as much as we are, we were a decade ago relative to the man, the demands, relative to the needs. And so all the more reason why we need to be exploring every available opportunity to create more and more and more housing at every available property and particularly in high-opportunity neighborhoods, which right now exclude multifamily almost entirely. And if I look at the properties that I've been tracking in my district for years that are sitting vacant, the ones that can be redeveloped as multifamily are being redeveloped, and the ones that cannot are not. We, in fact, have another case study in my district where, as I said, one, one building that has had trouble with fire and has histor, was historically four units, is being redeveloped. But in the next neighborhood over, we have a building that, because of the way it was rezoned and because of a history of permits or something, even though it was six units historically, its current zoning prevents it from being six units, and so it's not being put back into use. This, this, the long and short of what I'm saying is, as we look at vacancy in this city, there are money problems, there are finance problems, there are programmatic problems, there are operational deficiencies, there are not enough qualified bidders in the, the, for one house at a time. There is a limitation of capacity in the, in the legal section of the Housing Department. There, there is just so much more than we can, that we, than what we can get to at the pace that we would all like to see. But at the same time, there are simple structural policy barriers that the city of Baltimore continues to uphold. We are our own worst enemy in certain ways. And we have an opportunity to, while many of these things will take, as is noted, a very, very long time to change, there are barriers that we have erected ourselves and that we continue to uphold that we can change overnight. And we are not making those changes. And I am, as I have done many times before, letting you know that this will come before every member of this council in fairly short order, the opportunity for us to make this change. And, and I hope that we will all be on board to make this change. And I ask you all to look out for a report that will come out, a national report on this matter of housing underproduction that puts exclusionary zoning at the forefront of our understanding of the problem, that will come out this Thursday, and I look forward to sharing it with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Point, all of your points well taken. We now, we have two more agency reports, and that's the City Solicitor's Office will go next, and then we have the Department of Public Works as well. Is someone still here from the City Solicitor? Oh, hi. How are you?
Let me see if this is on. Oh, it is. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Member of the Council. My name is Ebony Thompson. I'm Deputy Solicitor for the Law Department. First, I want to highlight again the efforts that the Law Department has been making in terms of vacating the judgments that have not had their deeds filed. We have identified in excess of 400 properties already that are ready for us to start filing the notices, the motions for vacating the judgments. We have done 51 of those so far. We have been utilizing all of our lovely law clerks that, that we have, the three, the four that we have here. And I have also been reaching out to pro bono attorneys in the private sector because this is an area that we can utilize them. And we have requested funding for one additional paralegal and one attorney that can basically be dedicated to this. Because the total amount that we're looking at, where they're sitting vacant are actually in the thousands. We have 400 that are ready, but they are actually in the thousands, and they can make a huge dent in conjunction with the efforts that we're making on the NREM side, that we're working very closely with the Department of Housing and, of course, the assistance of Councilwoman Ramos on that. But just to give you all a brief update on that, the specifics, because I know Commissioner Kennedy talked about the progress that we're making on the NREM function, but we will have filings ready this month to be filed, which is a huge, huge, huge accomplishment. And it speaks to the dedication of Department of Housing. It is, it's just a joint effort. The council, the Law Department, City Administrator, it is just a huge, huge, huge feat and for, something for us to be able to accomplish in such short order. And then, right after that, we are anticipating at least another 30 to 40 cases that will be filed in August, and then we should start getting into the rhythm of a dedicated every month where we'll start breaking down that number. So that is a huge, huge, huge part of what the Law Department has been working on. In addition to that, the Law Department has been spearheading the, the exploration of blockchain technologies and the use of our title searches and recording of our deeds. And for some, that may sound like, you know, a new technology, but in essence, what it is, we are looking and exploring, utilizing a private blockchain that we would be able to control and input the data. But what it would allow us to do, if done right, it will allow us to eliminate doing multiple title searches every single time that we have to change hands. Because how we look at it is that if you want to take a vacant property and make it where someone is living in it, we are looking at at least three transactions. We are looking at the initial acquisition where whoever's on title now, where we are trying to acquire it. That's one title search. Then, of course, we are hopefully looking to get that into an investor's hands. That's the second title search. And then, of course, that investor hopefully will be doing the work to rehab that property and put it back to the end user, the end homeowner. So that's three title searches. That sometimes, unfortunately, this takes months. And it is slowing us down in terms of time and elimination of money. The other issue that blockchain technology would provide, and we talked about that, this is to Councilman Conway's question in terms of the aging deeds that we have there, the aging homes and aging titles, it will automatically signal to us and indicate when those are coming up. So that's going to allow us to be able to reach out sooner for the programs that we already have with the Department of Housing that, you know, that they've been working so hard on. And what it is, is it's going to eliminate a lot of the inefficiencies to help us speed up what we're doing, make it more efficient, because we're so far behind and we have such a huge number to tackle. And we want to utilize all of our resources. So I have been reaching out to other municipalities that have implemented this technology and had success with it, namely, New York City, who has a huge, huge, huge population. And we are working now on prototypes to bring that to the vacant housing work group that hopefully that you all will, will see once it passes through their hands so that we can really evaluate that and some of the needs that we could share here in their city. But the Law Department is dedicated to working with all of our agencies. We understand that this is a group effort, and we're here to run ideas through. A lot of people call us about it, different agencies, and we're here to be a resource. So that's where we are, Madam Chair.
I want to, I want to thank you for that detailed explanation. And it sounds like the recommendations are driving improvements with so many agencies. So we definitely, as a committee, look forward to the reviews. And Councilman Stokes has a comment?
I just have a question for Commissioner Kennedy. I already work with a lot of community associations on deed on houses we find and out, talking to our seniors, so it don't get to that point where they pass away and got to go through that process. My question is, I have been working with a lot of my residents, and a lot of times, they don't know how to reach out and how, when the assurances counsel to talk to the Maryland Insurance Commissioner, because I've helped a lot of them. When the insurance company just say, "No, we're not going to give you no more insurance," but they don't know that process. And we were able to reach out to the Maryland Insurance Commissioner, and they reinstated the insurance. So my question, will housing be working, kind of build that into making sure that the community is aware of the Maryland Housing Commissioner? Thank you.
Yes, and Councilman Stokes, that's an excellent point, and that's part of the kind of overall education campaign around insurance as well as kind of the estate planning that is, what are the resources available if their insurance is canceled, or what are the resources available if they're trying to get a new policy and feel that they're being discriminated against in terms of obtaining a policy or that it's overly expensive compared to their neighbors or others within the community?
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have the Department of Public Works.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Economic and Community Development Committee.
You can remove your mask if you'd like for clarity.
I'm going to start over again, Madam Chair. And excuse me, my voice is a little off. But good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Economic and Community Development Committee. My name is Jason Mitchell, and I'm the Director of your Department of Public Works. The Public Works has been involved with the Vacant Housing Executive Committee since its formation and led by our Administrator Shorter. And we've been represented by myself and our Acting Bureau Chief of the Bureau of Solid Waste, Ivan Moore Jackson, who's sitting to my right. Our main key objectives as part of this committee was to figure out a way to reduce blight at our, over 14,000 vacancies. And so how do we step up boarding and cleaning of those vacant properties? The Department, we're working with the committee, has created an initial list of properties with five or more service requests associated with those properties. And those have been compiled, and our Bureau of Solid Waste works biweekly to assess the condition of those said identified properties. In addition to that, during the months of March through June, the Department of Solid Waste has either cleaned, did a boarding, or high grass and weeds for over 5,600 service requests. And so we are busy out there trying to mitigate as much as possible some of the blight around these properties. But again, those resources are really constrained due to the number of vacancies out there. But one of the key issues for us is a process, and again, on how to transfer these properties into good hands. And so we looked internally on our process, and those processes are number one, you know, our demolition, our demolition program, and how we review those plans so that when you look at our three utilities, our sewer utility, our water utility, and our stormwater utility, how can we look at those and review those plans so that they can expedite the process, so that they can get in hands faster? And so we have commenced, you know, that process with our, our folks and teammates from the Housing and Community Development Department, and we are working on ways to mitigate that. We also have implemented an online plan review process for our natural resource and stormwater and utilities. We're using the same software, Project Box, as our housing and community development partners, whereby you can submit plans and drawings for review 24/7 on our website so that we can not only review them quickly, but also we can shift those plans to the Planning Department, Office of Sustainability, Parks and Rec Forestry Stores, Forestry Division, and others for a quick review and process, with the idea that we drive down review time so that we can get those properties in and out our hands and get them in good use and reuse. We also have implemented with the Maryland Department of Environment's support and approval, standard plan review process for minor disturbances, which is critical. And it does, and where that, it does not require professional developed plans for review, with the idea that for those smaller properties, under 5,000 square foot, that we can get in and out those properties and review and get them processed as well. And we also are looking at processes for those services that's over 5,000 square feet. So with that, you know, our, our goal is number, number one, try to keep our, not only our communities, but these vacancies as clean as possible, understanding our limited resources, but from a process standpoint for how we get these, these vacancies out of the hands of the city-owned properties and privately-owned property owners to get them into some more useful hands. Our goal is try to limit that timeline as, as, as much as possible so that you don't have to depend or wait on our department as, as much. And that's being done in coordination, again, with multiple departments, the Department of Finance and our good leader, Administrator Shorter. So that concludes the report for the... So that concludes the report for the Department of Public Works, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for all of your efforts. We had a conversation in another hearing about the mowing of the vacant lots, which is critical, obviously, and wondered if, well, one of the options that I had offered is that we've had several hundred vacant properties demolished as a result of state funding. And I think we need to go back to the state to make sure that we have dollars available for you all to be able to have more crews to mow these lawns. So as I think we, Chief Moore Jackson, you had talked about, you have eight crews to mow grass on these vacant properties as well as vacant lots, which is, I don't think we can manage, right? So have you done that analysis of how much you're going to need so that we can go to the state next year for this money?
Oh, we definitely can do that analysis. We will work on that analysis so that we can be ready for next year.
Yeah, because the state money was there to demolish a bunch of properties, I think it was over five hundred, Commissioner, from Project Core. And now they're vacant lots with no plan. So, well, not all of them have no plan, but most of them. So I'm hoping to be able to help you all with that. So if you could do that analysis, that would be helpful.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Any other questions from committee members? Okay, hearing none. We're going to go ahead and move on to taking public testimony. And we're going to start with Minister Christina Flowers. Is she still, there you go. Thank you. And you can feel free to take your mask off when you're at the podium.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that. How is everyone? Good afternoon, all. I always have to take the opportunity in our city to acknowledge our community and our homeless population. And how are you doing, manager and all my nice board of estimate individuals? You know, when we're talking about collaboration, partnerships, we have to identify the resources that are in these communities. And every one district have homeless individuals and people residing in vacant houses. You know, I operate a nonprofit that is ungoverned and our mission is to end homelessness, starting with the streets first. So when we have residents and individuals living under bridges and living in the woods and living on our corners in Baltimore City, we always should have an initial conversation of our partnerships and a lot of these homeless programs that want to provide services to such a vulnerable group of people, but they don't even have a housing plan. And I constantly engage with a lot of caseworkers and outreach workers, you know, a lot of them know Ms. Flowers and I appreciate them a lot, but it's hard to try to rebuild our people in a tent and they're still in that tent when you go and you come back, you know. So this housing, I thank you, Councilwoman Odoma, because when I think about any type of amendment to this bill, we have to involve, just like councilmen say, the community. I am an invested individual in this city. And as long as homeless people are on our streets, my voice will be heard in the city. So to our city agencies, a lot of y'all probably come, live afar, other places, I don't know. But we get to see this three hundred and sixty-five days a year, the plight of homelessness and what it's doing to individuals in the city. So I pray for the opportunity that we can be a part of the solution and have the opportunity, even for some of these houses, to go to some of these nonprofits without all the red tape and all the barriers. It's a lot of fancy stuff to go with y'all wording. I think y'all do great at what y'all do. But when it comes to the movement and ending homelessness, we have to bring the stakeholders to the table. And unfortunately, that's a lot of intelligent homeless people on the streets that can come and build any house y'all want to build. But you got to have some creative, out-of-the-box thinking. And when y'all think about those consultants, I am considering that, you know, because our city needs some consultant with humanity and recognizing that these individuals pay a lot of y'all salaries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony, Minister Flowers. Next up, Josh Fannin.
He had to leave.
And he had to leave, okay. Lacy Moreno. So you have a group with you?
No, I'm okay.
Okay.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here today.
You can be seated unless you're attested. Thank you. Okay.
So my name's Lacy Moreno and my younger sister, Kelsey Sadler, was one of the three firefighters that were killed at the Stricker Street fire on January twenty-fourth. I'm here today with Kelsey's husband, Brandon, as we grieve from the lives that were tragically lost. Kelsey was my best friend. She was a beautiful light in this world. She was an amazing wife and a caring mother. She was relentless, dedicated, and powerful. And today, I'm going to use her strength to ask you to please make the necessary changes to help protect the lives of the sworn personnel who protect this city every day. The vacant homes must be addressed. These vacant structures have created an increased danger to the public servants as well as the citizens they serve. They are death traps. The properties are consistently broken into, utilized for drug activity, vandalized and set fire. They are a threat to safety and life. On October twenty-eighth, two thousand fifteen, a previous fire broke out at two oh five South Stricker Street. And during firefighting operations, an interior collapsed, injuring three firefighters. On that same date, October twenty-eighth, two thousand fifteen, the Baltimore City Department of Housing and Community Development condemned that address, deeming it unsafe and uninhabitable and could not be occupied or even used until the structure was made safe. Nearly seven years later, this is the property that took Kelsey, Kenny, and Paul's life and drastically and irreparably altered so many more. Why did this property continue to stand for several years without being demolished, especially after being condemned? And this is not an isolated incident or situation. On Stricker Street alone, there are almost forty-four condemned properties. In Baltimore City, there are almost fifteen thousand vacant properties. I understand there are programs like Project Core and recommendations to address the vacant homes, but it's not happening quick enough to prevent what happened to them from happening to others. I especially don't want another family to experience the pain and heartache that I'm currently living through. Our lives will never be the same due to this tragedy, and it could have been prevented if these vacant homes were addressed. Paul Buttrum will never have the opportunity to hold his baby girl that's on the way. Kenny LaCaio will not be able to stand at the end of the aisle to greet Clara as they were planning their wedding. Kelsey's not going to be here for all the milestones with Mila, Lily, and Emmett, and to continue to live life within her home with her husband. And on the morning of January twenty-fourth, Brandon and I stood at two oh five South Stricker Street as we watched the crews, my fire department family, do the worst thing we might possibly have to do on this job, and that's rescue our own. Their brothers and sisters worked tirelessly, tirelessly in a compromised environment as they dug by hand to locate Kenny, then Kelsey, and finally Paul. We held on to an ounce of hope that maybe, just maybe, they would be okay. But when I saw CPR being performed on my sister as they loaded her into a medic unit, I knew her beautiful life had come to an end. I, just like Paul, Kelsey, and Kenny, am a career firefighter. We make decisions with the information that we are given. Crews need to have access to information about these properties that they're responding to before they arrive. They need to be updated en route with additional hazards. If a home is dangerous or condemned, they need to be flagged in the CAD system. A quick message from dispatch to responding crews, be advised the property is condemned. That alone would change the mindset of responding units and change tactics upon arrival. Code X-ray needs to be put back into place as well. These are temporary but immediate solutions that need to take place while the big ones are being addressed. So I am pleased to hear that there are efforts being made to update the CAD system for our responding units. We're sworn under an oath to protect life in the fire service, and on that day, people were reported trapped, and Kelsey, Kenny, and Paul fulfilled that oath. As the representatives of this city, there's an obligation to protect the city, its citizens, and those who protect them. I've been a little concerned things will not progress forward due to funding, and human life should always be held above anything. Kelsey, Kenny, and Paul's lives are more important than a triple bond rating. Please address the vacant homes and make the necessary changes to help protect the lives of the sworn personnel who protect this city every day. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Very powerful, and that took a lot of courage and love of family. So thank you. Your points are definitely well taken. And Rachel, before you speak, if you'd like to give your written testimony to the committee, Lacy, you can do that as well, if you want to give us your written testimony for, to be filed as we convene.
It's okay.
Rachel, go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Rachel Buttrum. I am now considered a widow since my husband, Paul Buttrum, died in the line of duty fighting.
Take your time.
Fighting a fire on South Stricker Street on January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two. Paul was a loving husband, a dear friend, and passionate about his job as a firefighter and protecting the citizens of Baltimore. Paul was truly one of a kind. When a firefighter is told that there are lives at stake, there is no hesitation about what needs to be done. The dwelling fire that took Paul's life was not the first in that particular vacant house. I asked this counsel to explain to Paul's brothers and sisters in the fire department and the cities of, the citizens of Baltimore, how a vacant home with a known history of fires and injuries was left standing in a danger to anyone who would enter. On January twenty-fourth, Paul and his crew responded to a vacant house fire and heard lives may be at stake inside that building. Regardless of the dangers, his crew entered the building without hesitation. This house would later engulf my husband and several other firefighters. Eight hours after the collapse, Paul bodies was, Paul's body was finally found. Every minute of those eight hours, I edged closer to the realization that this would be my husband's last day. To keep the public safe, the city promised to tear down homes like these. For years, these homes have been a breeding ground for drug activity, vagrancy, and have taken the lives of our loved ones. The data is available to the public and speaks for itself. Counsel, where is the accountability? I ask this question not just for my family, but for all the past, present, and future families affected by the city's inaction. January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, is forever the day I lost my husband, my best friend, and the love of my life. Prior to this in two thousand nineteen, Paul and I lost our son Nolan. Paul and I grieved together, and we're still grieving until the day of his death. Now I grieve for my son and my husband. I also found out one month of the day after my husband passed that we were expecting. Now I will raise our daughter with just the memories of her father. The sad fact is that Paul never knew that we were expecting. All our dreams of traveling together are gone. I must now maintain our home all by myself. I must now figure out how to keep our dreams alive as I grieve, and I must now raise our daughter alone instead of with her dad. Daily, I worry about our friends and family within the fire department who face the same dangers that took my husband. I wouldn't want anyone else to have to go through what I have. Counsel, I am anxiously awaiting for the day that this issue is dealt with. I know that Paul would want to make certain that this never happens again. Paul treated his coworkers like brothers and sisters, and it's my responsibility to make sure that this does not happen again. Now is the time for action and now is the time for accountability.
Thank you, Rachel. I know that was very difficult, but I'm sure this was, everything that you have said is where your words are well taken. You continue to be strong.
Thank you.
And we're here to help you in any way we can.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Sean Kloski.
Hello, I'm Sean Kloski, President of Rebuild Metro. And I think our experience shows that despite the significant pain and suffering that this not only caused the firefighters, but the families that live next to these vacant houses every day, there is actually a message of hope in Council Stokes's district. What we've been able to do is be very sober about the size of the problem, right? So we start with the acknowledgement that one in seven census tracts in the city of Baltimore is affected by this problem. One in seven, that's an awful lot. And that there has been a point five, less than a half of one percent, change in the vacancy rate in the last twenty years. Despite Project Five Thousand, Vacants to Value, you name it, it's not moving. Why is that? Because right now, the natural rate of abandonment in the city is about three a day. So the fact that we picked up two hundred and seventy-five to the good is amazing, because during the same time, houses were being abandoned. The issue is, the issue of hope is, we can solve this because we already have. We have actually worked with the city and the people in this council and the people in this room to take two neighborhoods in East Baltimore that were troubled by seven hundred and fifty abandoned properties. We've gotten rid of eighty-five percent of those abandoned properties. We started, as Councilman Stokes said, with talking to the community. The first thing they said is no displacement, right? So this was done without displacement. We've seen a population increase of twelve hundred people in those catchment areas during the same time the city lost about thirty-five thousand. We have seen the homicides cut in one neighborhood by seventy-five percent and another neighborhood by fifty percent. This is in Baltimore's capacity to change. I think what we've got to avoid is the false narrative that we don't have enough money. The vacancy is costing, has cost city taxpayers, city owners of property, five point four billion dollars, that's with a B. That's almost ninety-five thousand dollars per house next to a vacant. This is the problem. We've got to stop thinking about it from a standard of what we can't do and think about, take our creative juices together and what must we do? And we can make this challenge work. Our estimate is that if you were to resolve this, you would see to the good that the three billion dollars that Councilwoman Ramos is talking about would generate the money and more to pay for it. But we can only do this if we do it together and at once. The Rebuild Metro scale was a hundred and twenty million dollars, right? In one, well, two neighborhoods, but that's the scale. The city's not poorer for it, the city's richer for it. We need to do this in more neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony as well, and I think we now have a few online testimonials that we'll call. And we'll start with Angela Scott. Are you there?
Yes, I am.
We're ready for your testimony.
Okay, excuse me, I'll do the work. Definitely, I definitely am in favor of the bill that was expressed earlier. I definitely do see the concern that it is important for, we as a community, we as a, want to purchase a home, but I'm having a problem with the home because of the fact that the vacant house is next door to me. So it's complicated for a bank to loan you money, even if you may have good credit and all of that. So that causes a problem for me to be a first-time homeowner. Again, the information, the letter that was written from the city council in regards to, the letter that was written on February twenty-twenty-three, Councilwoman Ramos, I am definitely...
Hello, you still there?
A part-time. And to, and to change a community from blight to bright definitely is important to me and as well as important to everyone that's on the call. And also for the commissioner, as I begin to look on the webpage and look on the Buy Into Baltimore, just a question, how often is the webpage updated? Is it updated quarterly or is it updated annually? Because some things I saw on there, it said, coming soon.
So we're just getting your testimony at this point, not asking questions, just give your testimony. Just give your testimony. We'll check on the website.
Okay, yes.
You have any further, you have any further testimony?
No, I just agree with all of what all of the council, councilwomen and councilmen, I agree with everything that they said in regards to the blight, in regards to the vacant housing. I agree with all of that. And definitely in regarding to nominating someone from the community, because when you live in a community, it makes a difference. When you don't live in a community, it makes another difference. But living in the community day to day makes a difference as to what you see and how you feel. Thank you very much for hearing my response.
Thank you. Your testimony is recorded and on file. Moving on to the next person. Ilana Jones.
I'm not testifying.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Trung? Ms. Trung, sorry, I'm sorry. Ms. Trung, are you there?
Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, you're on.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the community. Thank you so much for this opportunity. Thank you to Councilwoman Ramos for introducing this bill. My name is Trung, and I am the Baltimore Organizer for the Community Development Network of Maryland. Our Baltimore City members, known as the Baltimore Ethical Community Development Group.
If you can speak up a little louder or get a little closer, that would be helpful.
All right. I am on top of my laptop. Hopefully, you can hear me now.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you for that. So, I represent more than 40 community-based nonprofits, mission-based developers, and community development professionals, including Mr. Kloski, who testified beforehand. My heart goes out to the family of the three firefighters who died at the Stricker Street fire. And it's deeply unfortunate that it took their death to really push the city to recognize the arcanine scale of the problem of vacant properties. Our hope is that this memo is the beginning of, is truly, truly the beginning of the city's bigger lasting commitments to address these issues. So, we hope that the community does continue this series of hearings to, so we as members of the public can find out regular updates about how the city is moving along with progress with this. And also, so we can make sure that the city continues to treat this with the urgency that it deserves, particularly with regards to implementing their recommendations. And I know that this city agency head, Seattle Charter, have acknowledged urgency, but it would be really helpful to see moving forward that the positions requested within the 30-day outline are remained, are fully, that commitment continues. We also support efforts to streamline the processes as needed to release the funds and move those funds to the relevant agencies so they can bring on that staff, so they can implement these programs. We know it's yet that getting the money out to the people who need it, whether it's within city government or to folks doing the work on the ground, has been a big issue in terms of addressing vacant properties. On that note about transparency, as a person representing a number of nonprofits who work in the neighborhoods most impacted by this, would be really great to see a timeline for implementation. So, instead of saying that, just saying that we are working on this as soon as we can, would be helpful to receive some sort of sense of milestone, milestone date. So, we're talking three months, six months, a year for these things to be implemented. Are there ways to speed it up that the agencies and city are considering? Hopefully, these are the kind of questions that future candidates can dig into. Because as many of you know, and you're constituents know, one of the most frustrating aspects of living near vacant properties is the mystery around it.
Thank you for your testimony.
What's going to make the city, what does the city like to do? Say, all right, thank you.
Oh, we lost her there. Okay, are you done?
I was just about to say one last thing, which I note, agency head Ray Bid's note about him, his concerns about the impact on bond rating to expand borrowing. I would just say that it's worth it for the city to spend a little bit more now for long-term benefits, both city revenue and for city residents' well-being.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nicole Hart.
I'm sorry. D H C D. She's with the D H C D.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're with the agency.
Oh, she is.
Is there anyone else?
Roblin Heath.
Roblin Heath.
Good afternoon. My name is Roblin Heath, and I'm here as a resident of 21217 and as the program coordinator for Fight Blight Be More to provide testimony for the bill. It's Fight Blight Be More's position that any policies designed to eliminate vacancy should be considered based on its impact on existing residents and adjacent properties, compatibility of meeting communities' desire for land use and development, as well as its ability to provide repair to those whose housing, educational, religious, social displacement resulted in the concentrated vacancy. Basically, addressing vacancy must be done by methods that stop the harms and repairs the damage done by past harms. Residents in or displaced from the most directly impacted community must be centered in the process, not the proverbial market, the banks, the ads, the meds, or tourists. One strategy I want to address in particular is the education campaign on the importance of homeowner insurance. It's not so much that the homeowners don't know about homeowner's insurance or its importance. It's often that they can't afford it or they can't acquire it because of the vacant or vacancies next door. This is an example of how city government fails to take accountability for how its damaged residents. The strategy should be instead, support homeowners acquiring quality and affordable homeowner's insurance. This strategy could include an education campaign about renters and homeowner's policy, but more show should include an application support for the Maryland Joint Assurance Commission, Insurance Association, which is the MAEF for property insurance and grants for homeowners who can't afford policies, prioritizing applications for those who can't get insurance in the private market because they live next to a city vacant. There are other examples within the 30-day vacant review recommendation memo where the administration and the agencies fail to account for how their policies and operations create and maintain vacancy, so they aren't likely to provide any real help to the residents. The city has to stop designing strategies that are out of touch and with the lived experience of people in communities with the high level of vacancies. In fact, many people in the community have been doing the work. Our leadership on how to address vacancies, what the city should be listening to and following. A few more of those recommendations are documented in our written testimony that was already submitted for this bill, and I'd like to thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. This is an important matter. Generally, we end at 4:00 p.m., but today, we wanted to hear from the community at no cost, and we, the committee, would like to thank you all for staying the course. Your input is definitely appreciated. So, thank you again. Before we recess, Councilwoman Ramos, you have some final words?
Yes, Madam Chair, I really appreciate the opportunity. I want to thank everybody for joining us today. I do know there were a few others that wanted to testify online and were unable to, so I do hope that folks send in their written testimony. Madam Chair, I appreciate that we'll be taking a lot more deep dive in subsequent hearings on this as well, which I'm grateful for. And I just want to ask the agencies, it looks like from your reports that I just glanced at, we didn't get the updates that you verbally told us. So, if you could provide those updates to us in writing as a revised report, that would be super helpful. That was the goal I was hoping for today, and that way, we can continue to monitor. I also want to thank the families of the firefighters, you're so brave for being here. I really thank you, and I'm so, so sorry for your loss. I'm so sorry. We will work hard on this. I want to commit that to you. It's so important, not just for making sure that our, we have to make sure people are not living next to vacant properties. We have to make sure that our communities are ones that people are proud of, and we have to make sure we don't have more firefighters die. We will do that. I commit that to you. I want to make sure that the rest of the administration is committed to that as well. This is really important. This has been important for decades, and we have to get this right, and we will work hard on it. I appreciate your time, Madam Chair.
Thank you. This committee is in recess. Thank you all again. Enjoy your summer, the rest of your summer.